Ready.
We are ready.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, good morning. As board chair, I would like to call to order this agenda review workshop meeting of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. The purpose of the workshop is to develop and discuss proposed agenda items which may be presented to the board for consideration and potential action at its next quarterly meeting on September 12th, 2023. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I welcome everyone in attendance and I thank my fellow board members, FLVS's CEO and all FLVS staff members who have prepared us for today's workshop. I would also like to make a special welcome to our new board member, Ms. Nursey Radcliffe, who was recently appointed to our board by the governor. I can't see you, but Ms. Radcliffe, we look forward to working with and getting to know you as we start out this new school year at FLVS. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, let's proceed with the roll call. Mr. Moore, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Here.
Dr. Tony Arsa.
I was muted a moment ago.
Okay, we'll come back.
Present, present, present.
Okay, Mr. Rob Conerens.
Here.
Mr. Ed Poswoli.
Here.
Ms. Nursey Radcliffe.
Here.
And Dr. John Watret.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next, I will open the floor for any opening remarks of the co-chair and fellow board members. Mr. Co-chair, Dr. Arsa.
Good morning, everyone.
Board member Cornarans.
Good morning. Looking forward to the prep. I appreciate all the work that goes into this, so thank you all for putting it together and getting us on a call early.
Um, board member Pozoli.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the prep. I look forward to hearing some more today. Thanks.
Board member Radcliffe.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I really am looking forward to working alongside all of you.
Um, board member Watret.
Good morning, everyone, and I'm glad I'm sitting on this side now.
And with my, thank you all. My opening remarks are, thank you, Dr. Watret. Okay, um, now we will turn to Dr. Algais to lead today's presentation and discussion of proposed agenda items. Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Chair Ryder. I echo your sentiments in welcoming Ms. Radcliffe to the board. And Straklup, you have the opportunity of working with some amazing caring individuals. You're going to really enjoy working on this board with the folks. They are top-notch, each and every one of them quality individuals, and we look forward to working with you as we continue to move our organization forward. Uh, purpose of today's workshop is to review the proposed agenda for the September 12th, 2020, 2023 quarterly board meeting. I'll now walk through our leadership team's proposal, proposed agenda items with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions along the way. Uh, item two approval will be requested for the Board of Trustees June 6th, 2023 quarterly board meeting minutes and four minutes of today's workshop meeting, August 15th, 2023, Agenda Review Workshop Meeting Minutes. Section three will be public comments, and following public comments, I'll present section four, the CEO report. Uh, September 12th, CEO comments, reports, and presentations will include five agenda items. In 4.1, I will present the quarterly financial report for the period ending June 30th, 2023. 4.2 Cory Wheeler, our Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will present the FLVS Unaudited Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2223, which is prepared under generally accepted governmental accounting requirements and will then be presented to actual auditors to give a finalized audit. Um, report by, I think, the March meeting. Hopefully, they'll be done. Um, section 4.3, Ms. Nikki Lowry, our Chief Strategy Officer, will present the legislative update. And section 4.4, Ms. Beth Brunner, Manager of the FLVS Foundation, will share with you the FLVS Foundation's September 2020, 2023 Quarterly Report, throwing a lot of 2020s in there. Uh, and for section 4.5, I'll present FLVS student highlights as we always do. Section 5 are the proposed cons- consent for contracts, and we'll have four proposed consent contract agenda items for the board's consideration and approval. And Ms. Joanne Sarah, our Senior Director of Procurement and Contracting, will review the agenda items right now.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Algais, and thank you. Good morning, board members. As Dr. Algais said, I have four items to review with you today. As always, please stop me along the way. I welcome your questions. Interrupt me at any time. The first item on the agenda is information technology, security, software, and services. Uh, FLVS has been contracting with Northwest Regional Data Center, uh, which is through FSU for managed IT security services, including SecureWorks since 2018. On 20, excuse me, November 17th, 2020, the board had approved a three-year statement of work for services. And now we extend one additional, we would like to extend one additional year, bringing the contract through November 1st, 2024. The cost of the extension, uh, is estimated at $1,288,108. Uh, we're likely going to ask for not to exceed of 1.4 million. Um, IT security things come up, and sometimes we need to make adjustments to our licensing and con- and, um, contracted services under that agreement. This is a slight decrease, um, from the previous year, so the contract is not increasing in value. It's really staying about the same, just a little bit less. Any questions on that board agenda item? Okay, uh, the next item, 5.2, is an increase of contract expenditure authority. Um, this is a standing item that we always have on the agenda that we hold in case there's any increases needed under our existing contracts. Um, for this board meeting, I anticipate three. The first one is ExecuNet. ExecuNet provides colocation services for our educator learning management system, which includes internet connectivity, bandwidth, and rack split, and rack space, business for hardware, including servers and all peripheral and related devices. The board awarded this contract November 30th, 2021, for three years, excuse me, for two years, with three optional one-year renewals. We're requesting an increase in spend for the initial two-year term. Um, the board had originally approved $552,000. We're asking for an additional increase in contract spend authority of $50,000 to bring us through December 31st, 2023. The new, uh, initial contract term spend will be $602,000. In addition, we're, we'll be asking for a not-to-exceed amount of $302,000 for each year of the three optional one-year renewal terms. The basis of this award was, uh, utilizing the IT exemption. Any question on that contract increase? Okay, the next item is an increase under our RFP award for Suncoast Forms and Systems and Sandy Alexander. This is our print and promotional vendors. This RFP was awarded in September of 2021, uh, due to the rebranding of FLVS Global to FlexPoint and the new logo, we've had to print, uh, a lot of new materials, uh, new printed items, um, change all of our marketing materials, things that we use outside of Florida and in the state of Florida. Uh, we are requesting a not-to-exceed of $650,000 cumulative for this three-year term. Uh, that three-year term goes through September 2024, and then we are requesting a not-to-exceed of $240,000 per fiscal year for each renewal period, uh, and that is again three one-year renewal terms for that contract. Um, a side note on this item, we do have an RFP currently on the street for promotional items, including warehousing, pick, pack, and ship. Pending the award of that may change how much we spend under these contracts because we may shift some of the spend to the new award, which will be brought before you. And our third item is Coastal Cloud. Uh, Coastal Cloud was awarded by RFP in December of 2022, so some of you may recall, for Salesforce Analysis Improvement and Implementation Services. This was a two-phase project where phase one was they were going to take a deep dive into Salesforce.com, look at how we're utilizing it, and make recommendations on how we can improve and optimize our use of the Salesforce system. Um, that phase one was completed and on budget. As we look at phase two and their recommendations, uh, we're looking at an expansion of the scope of work than we, than we originally anticipated, so we do anticipate that the initial estimate of $581,200 will need to be increased. We're currently negotiating that, um, doing a deep dive analysis of their recommendations to determine what we need to move forward with. But I do anticipate having that number prior to the September 12th board meeting for you to review. Any questions on that third item? Okay, thank you. I know I'm speaking fast with a lot of information, so again, please tell me to slow down or jump in. Uh, my third id- agenda item is information technology staff augmentation. Uh, FLVS has been utilizing the Florida Department of Management Services staff augmentation contracts, um, for years now, for a lot of years, and they expire about every year or two. The current agreements are going to expire on October 1st, 2023. They do have a new bid in place, and what we're going to ask the board's approval for is to um, have the opportunity to utilize their award of, and of the ITB listed in the agenda item. We don't have the contracts. There's usually hundreds of providers on there. We issue RFQs for any particular IT staff augmentation services that we need. If we wait until after the award and after the September board, we could have a gap in services which could delay projects that we have ongoing, so we are going to ask the board's preemptive approval to utilize that Florida Department of Management Services award of that ITB. Uh, the not-to-exceed request on that expenditure for all IT staff aug is 3.5 million. That's been consistent of what we asked for last year, so there is not an increase of spend on that award. Any questions on that item? Okay, and finally, 5.4, uh, we would like to request an additional contract to our IT piggyback contracts. The last board meeting, the board approved four cooperative contracts that we could utilize for the purchases of IT hardware, software, and services. Uh, the Florida Department of Management Services is working on a new contract, and this one, we will wait until the contract is awarded. If it's awarded prior to the September 12th meeting, I will include that on the agenda item. If that contract is not awarded, then you'll see this item drop off the agenda. Uh, we're not asking again for any additional spend. Uh, the last board meeting, you approved cumulative spend for these IT services. And again, we're not asking for additional spend. We're just asking for an additional contract to use. That additional contract again will just give us more flexibility and some additional products, not on the original four that I had brought before you. And that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to stay on the line. If not, I will pass it back over to Dr. Algais.
I, I do have a question, Joanne, if you can clarify, uh.
Sure.
In, one of those was, uh, RFPed out. Uh, if you could talk about the cone of silence, just to if that's applicable yet in any of these.
Sure, um, the one for the warehousing, pick, pack, and ship, um, that is an RFP on the street. If anyone reaches out to a non-procurement member or a board member with questions or to advocate for their company, we ask that you just refer them back to me in procurement. Uh, we do recognize a cone of silence when we have competitive solicitations that are posted. Um, any discussions with potential contractors or lobbyists could jeopardize the process, so we'd like to be sure that we have a clean process moving forward. Is that answer? Good. Thank you, Dr. Algais. That's a very good point I should have brought up.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
So for section six, proposed consent item, we have annual reports and forms. We'll present and propose seven reports for approvals as consent agenda items. 6.1 is our FLVS Quarterly Staff Data Report, and this report summarizes personnel actions over the prior quarter of our fiscal year. 6.2 is the Fiscal Year 2324 Mental Health Plan. FLVS is eligible to receive the state's mental health assistance allocation for the 2324 school year, and the estimated amount of the allocation is nearly 2.7 million. Prior to receiving payment of such funds, FLVS must submit to the Florida Department of Education a proposed 2324 Mental Health Plan approved by the FLVS Board of Trustees. Per Florida statute, the mental health assistance allocation is intended to fund the establishment and expansion of school-based mental health care, train educators and other school staff in detecting and responding to mental health issues, and connect children, youth, and families who may experience behavioral health issues with appropriate services. With the 2324 allocation and any roll-forward dollars from last year's allocation, our total expenditure to meet these goals during the fiscal year is estimated to be close to 2.5 million. Item 6.3 focuses on the 22 through 25 District English Language Learners Plan. Like other Florida public school districts, FLVS is required to submit a school district ELL plan to the Florida Department of Education, which describes its proposed procedures and methodologies for serving ELL students. The ELL plan includes standards for school program entry, exit, and post-reclassification monitoring, a description of instructional, categorical, and student services, provisions for and plans to employ qualified staff, and evidence of consultation with a parent leadership council or other advisory board representative of parents of ELL students. The ELL plan was previously approved by the board at the June 14th, 2022 meeting. Approval by the board is requested for amendments to the ELL plan providing for updates and process improvements and organizational structural changes. For item 6.4, the 23 through 24 Student Progression Plan helps identify standards for evaluating specific levels of student performance and instructional measures for student progress. The Student Progression Plan is updated yearly with edits that ensure clarity and compliance with FLVS policies and FDOE rules. Item 6.5 is the Proposed 2023/24 Uniform Assessment Calendar for K-12 FLVS Full-Time Schools. Each school district must complete the uniform calendar template with district-required assessment information, including assessment type and total minutes to administer each test. The calendar must be published on the FLVS full-time website and also in the FLVS student handbook. A link to the calendar from the website must be provided to the Florida Department of Education by October 1st. Item 6.6 focuses on the 2324 School Improvement Plans, which constitute living documents for each of FLVS full-time schools. These plans identify goals and action steps needed for evaluating specific levels of student performance, and also point out data-driven instructional measures intended to increase student achievement. The plans also include measures to close achievement gaps on state assessments by one or more subgroups, for example, targeted support and improvement measures. As a living document, each plan will be updated as required by the F- FLDOE and will be publicly accessible on our website. These plans will be finalized with assistance from each school's advisory council and submitted to the FDOE. And finally, 6.7 is our disposal of assets. The Facility Department has determined that the assets in the attached spreadsheets qualify for disposal in accordance with Florida statutes. These assets are fully depreciated in accordance with FLVS depreciation schedules, or were expensed at the time of acquisition and not capitalized items, and they are either unfit for FLVS use or are excess items. These items will be disposed of in a manner that best fits the needs of the organization, up to and including an open sale, donation to another school district, or otherwise as specified in Florida statute. Payment for the items will be made to FLVS and accounted for in the general fund. And that is all for section six. Any questions on any of those? Item 7, Proposed Discussion Finance Matters. We'll have five financial items for the board's proposed discussion agenda. Ms. Cory Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will be reviewing these items. Cory, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Algais. Good morning, board. Uh, the first is item 7.1, the Fiscal Year 2223 Budget Amendment Number 5. This item is to request approval of a proposed Fifth Amendment to the 2223 budget for the purpose of updating the Florida Virtual School budget for estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund. This is currently a placeholder and will be updated with totals and an Exhibit A prior to the September 12th quarterly board meeting. The second item is 7.2, Fiscal Year 2324 Budget Amendment Number 1. This item is to request approval of a proposed First Amendment to the 2324 budget for the purpose of updating the Florida Virtual School budget for estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Services Fund, and Enterprise Fund. Again, this is currently a placeholder and will be updated with totals and an Exhibit A prior to the September 12th quarterly board meeting. The third item, 7.3, is Classroom Teacher and Other Instructional Personnel Salary Increase Allocation Plan. The Classroom Teacher and Other Person- Instructional Personnel Salary Increase Allocation, or TSIA, is provided by the legislature in the Florida Education Finance Program to assist school districts in their compliance with the requirement that the minimum base salary for full-time classroom teachers is at least 47.5, or to provide salary increases to instructional personnel in a manner that best meets the needs of the district. Each school district, including FLVS, shall develop a plan that clearly delineates the planned distributions of funds. The plan must demonstrate the intent of how the funds will be allocated. The TSIA plan must be approved by the board and submitted to the State Department of Education no later than October 1st, 2023. The final distribution will vary since final instructional ratings will adjust the number of teachers at each rate and final performance school, scores will not be available until later in the year. FLVS achieved the required 47,500 salary during the implementation year, which was fiscal year 2021. This proposal is to increase all teacher salaries who get a final rating for the fiscal year of 2223 of effective by 3% and those who have highly effective by 4%. The differentiated pay is required by Florida statute, where teachers who are rated effective receive an adjustment equal to at least 50% and no more than 75% of the annual adjustment provided for a highly effective employee. FLVS's TSIA allocation is 15.2 million in the 2324 FEFP. Once final scores are completed, it is expected that the amount may vary from the 15.2 million based on the actual number of employees who receive highly effective ratings. Any variance, which is expected to be 100,000 or less, will be paid from the general fund and reported to the FLVS Board of Trustees via a budget amendment. If approved, this adjustment for eligible teachers will be applied retroactively to July 1st, 2023. Any questions? Okay. Item 7.4 is an adjustment to the fiscal year 202324 base salary of support staff not covered by the Florida Classroom Teacher and Other Instructional Personnel Salary Increase allocations, or TSIA. The purpose of this agenda item is to request the board's approval and authorization of a fiscal year 2324 base salary increase of 3% for FLVS personnel occupying positions that are not covered for or eligible, covered by or eligible for the TSIA. If approved, this adjustment will be applied retroactively to July 1st, 2023. And finally, item 7.5 is the Information Technology Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year 2324. The purpose of this agenda item is to request the board's approval of a revised information technology salary, staff salary schedule to simplify it for presentation and align it to other salary schedules within the Omnibus FLVS Salary Schedule, including FLVS Support Staff, Instructional Staff, FlexPoint Staff, and other FLVS Personnel. The proposed salary schedule we, will be presented at the September board meeting. We do not anticipate a change to the min-max ranges, and there will be no effect on an existing employee salaries as a result of this modification. A detailed list organized by FLVS position titles will be provided to illustrate, illustrate a crosswalk between the proposed IT schedule and those currently in place. Once approved, the IT salary schedule will be revised in the existing FLVS Omnibus Salary Schedule, which was approved by the board in March 2023. Thank you. I turn it back over to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you very much. Any questions on any of those items? Right, section eight, uh, proposed discussion will be the FLVS Board Policies for First Reading, Policy Revisions, and Repeals. We have a number of board policies and policy revision and repeals up for first reading. We will be requesting the board's authorization to publish the text and provide public notice of a hearing of these proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals. And Dr. David Daggett, our General Counsel, and or Karen Chastain, our Deputy General Counsel, will be reviewing these at the September 12th quarterly board meeting. Section nine, a proposed discussion will be board policies for hearing and adoption. We have a number of proposed board policies, policy revisions, and repeals, which we will put forward for the board's hearing and adoption in agenda item 9.1, and of course, these were, uh, approved at the prior board meeting for first reading. And for 9.2, we'll also present the Proposed 2324 FLVS Student Code of Conduct for Adoption, Adoption, and that also was, uh, reviewed at the prior meeting. And all districts are required to adopt a student code of conduct and to distribute to the appropriate stakeholders. Any questions on either of those toys? I will now turn it over for the next half hour to Dr. David Daggett.
Come now. Do I have comments? Yes, I do. Uh, okay, thank you very much, uh, Dr. A, and, uh, I just wanted to give a shout out as well to our new board chair, uh, Ms. Linda Ryder and our co-chair, uh, To- Dr. Tony Arza. Thanks for stepping up and welcome, uh, to board member Nursey Radcliffe. We are so happy to have you join us. I think you'll find it rewarding, uh, although it is a volunteer service, and of course, uh, the rest of our board members I'm very grateful for, and for Dr. Watret's leadership for, uh, I think it was at least over a two-year period as our chair. So, uh, with that.
Hey, Rob, hey, Rob, you noticed that we were just an afterthought there, just to, just want to make that.
I didn't want to say anything. I noticed. But thank you for my shout out.
We're just the old dogs on the porch.
That's it, that's it.
Did say thanks to the others. All right, so, uh, I need to ask for a litigation shade meeting, so allow me, uh, with the script. A Board of Trustees Litigation Shade Meeting is hereby requested for purposes of the Boards and Legals Council, discussion of litigation strategy and expenditures in strict compliance, of course, with, uh, section 287, oh, 118 of the Florida statutes. It concerns a federal court lawsuit known as Florida Virtual School versus K-12 Inc. and K-12 Florida LLC. Case number 620-CV-2354, and it is currently pending in the District Court of Middle District of Florida, Orlando District. Notice is hereby given that this litigation shade meeting will take place upon or shortly after the commencement of the board's next quarterly meeting, which is set to begin at 9 o'clock on September 12th, 2023. Written public notice shall be provided in accordance with Florida law. The anticipated length of the meeting is about 30 minutes. Consistent with section 286, oh, 118, the entire shade meeting will be transcribed by a certified court reporter, and a copy of the transcript will be made part of Florida Virtual School's public record after the litigation has concluded. Anticipated attendees, of course, are those that are, uh, prescribed by, uh, section 286, oh, 111. And they include our board chair, uh, Linda Ryder, board co-chair, Dr. Tony Arza, board member Robert Conerens, board member Ed Poswoli, board member Nursey Radcliffe, board member Dr. John Watret, uh, FLVS's President and CEO, Dr. Louis Algais, uh, FLVS Senior Assistant General Counsel, Louis Guzman, uh, FLVS General Counsel, myself, David Daggett, and our outside counsel, Mr. Stephen Luther of the Luther Law Firm, and Mr. Tom Bishop of the Bishop Mills Law Firm. Uh, and of course, we'll have the court reporter as well. Uh, with that, I will yield the floor and the balance of my time back to you, Dr. A.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated, as always, Dr. Daggett. Um, so, thank you all for your participation in today's workshop. That concludes all the items. Uh, September 12th quarterly board meeting agenda will be timely posted for the public. And I invite board members to reach out to me directly with any questions, or if you wish to clarify anything we went through today, or anything else that you have on your mind. I turn it back over to Board Chair Ryder for any closing comments and to formally adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. You made this a very easy first meeting for me. Board members, do you have any additional questions or comments? None? Okay, thank you. Oh, say that? I missed it.
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Chair, I have a comment. I appreciate David Daggett's brevity today.
I'll second that. But he'll make up for it in the next one, you know.
He will, he will, yeah. He'll try harder.
I'm pleasantly surprised. I had nine to 12 on my calendar.
Oh, no, yeah, that they, well, you never know where David's going, so they have to. Now you know.
I'm here all week.
And when it's on Sunday, there you go.
Um, okay, having reviewed the proposed agenda for our September 12th, 2023 quarterly meeting, we will now proceed with closing remarks and adjournment. First, I will turn to my fellow board members. Any remarks, Mr. Co-chair?
Thank you, everyone, for preparing such a well-informed meeting.
Thank you, everyone, for preparing such a well-informed meeting, helping us get through everything today. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Board member Conarans?
No, just appreciate the precise report and getting out early.
Thank you, board member Pozzoli.
I have nothing to add. Thank you, everybody, for participating and the staff for preparing so well.
Board member Radcliffe?
Thank you. I, again, have been so impressed from the very start, just with the preparation for everything, so I truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Board member Watret?
Now, just echo everyone. Thank you for all the preparation and I appreciate the 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 time that you put in to make it easy for us to to follow along with all the complex issues that go on.
Thank you, Dr. Watret, and I'm going to agree with what everybody said, you know, thank you so much for the preparation. I'd also like to make a quick comment about our Florida FLVS Teacher of the Year. I was lucky enough to go to the gala, Melissa Kelly, so I want to make sure that we recognize her and her good works. And I'd also, of course, again, like to thank Dr. Watret for, I think I can speak for the whole board, for your amazing leadership for the last two years. You're, it's got, you've got big, big shoes to fill, so thank you so much. We, I think we all really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, Dr. Algays, do you have any closing remarks?
No. But thank you once again for dedic your dedication and your time.
Thank you. And here we go, doctor. I mean, does the general counsel have any closing remarks?
Doctor, but yeah, sure.
Yeah, I know, doctor, but I was going to say, yeah, so Dr. Daggett, do you have any closing remarks?
Well, sit back and let me tell you. Thank you very, very much, as always.
Touche.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything. We, we, we play around with you, but thank you so much for everything you do, honestly. This concludes today's agenda review workshop meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think that's first, second.
Did I do something?
No, I'm saying I think that's Dr. Watret's first, second in any meeting.
Oh, yes. It's a first. I don't know where I stopped. Any opposed? No, motion carries. I once again thank everyone who attended and prepared us for today's meeting, and I look forward to seeing you on September twelfth. This meeting is